So we're talking about roll call, he don't remember if it's in the order. I thought you mentioned this too. The United States. Is. China's nation on their county. And this. Charters.
You're.
Florida. You're. Wilson.
You're.
Pencil. You. Smelter, Richard.
Here.
Okay, so the beginning of this, we're going to open up the floor for nominations for mayor.
I nominate. Joanna Horta.
There a second?
I'll say it here.
Yeah, there's a second. And then. Is there any other nominations? There's a nominee for Yelson. And a second? Is there any further nominations? We've not heard all those recommendations. I'll ask for a roll call vote for the nomination of Joanna Horta as mayor. Uh, charters.
Yes.
Horta?
Yes.
Wilson?
No.
Pencil?
Yes.
Smelter. And it's passed that Joanna. Horta is our mayor. We saw we serve the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State. You give me a little sign in there. Yeah.
It's open for mayor pro temp. For nominations.
I'd like to be found in the chair.
Are there any other nominations?
I need that a second.
Okay. Okay, so. Somebody needs a second there. Now, yes.
For you?
Yeah.
Any other nomination? Oh, sorry, that's your job, sorry.
Any other nominations? Okay. The nominations are closed, roll call.
Remember, um, okay, Wilson? Pencil?
Yes.
Smelter, Richard? Yes. Charters?
Yes.
Horta?
Yes.
We saw we serve the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State. If they could discharge a human being, so I protect them, but you know.
Okay, approval of the amended agenda. It is amended that it will be. Chief is the point. Uh. Mediation representatives. On the tower issue with which that is taking place is. Going. So that goes in the panel. So I'm hoping to approve the. Amendment, Glenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended.
So again.
Roll call.
Charters?
Yes.
Horta?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yo.
Pencil?
Yes.
Smelter, Richard?
Yes.
Okay, we have no request to appear before council. So. Please.
I need to stand up?
Yes, please.
Name and address.
Yeah, please.
Yes, thank you for the reminder. My name is Annie Browning. I live at Thirty Grove Place. And I was just looking at your agenda and I just wanted to speak up because I think Mary Roehbling's name is spelled wrong. I think it's R O H B L I N G. But so just talk on it. That's all for my public input. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other public? Moving on, approval of the notes. Of the regular council meeting on ten twenty one and the special meeting on ten twenty nine.
Just the correspondence as Annie noted, there was a correspondence to. Thankful for staff's city call.
And I just made some time. Where do you hear it made?
I did too. The part was spelling. Oh, and first I forgot. To mention to you on page two of the housing commission. Where it's on the first sentence, it says, name. Project has six available. They only had one available, but there were six applications.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I missed that one this morning.
It's six hundred years, isn't it? Thank you for the clarification.
And then I gave her, yes. Yes.
I made a motion to move the. Eighteen minutes, we're trying to council meeting ten twenty one. Twenty twenty five as, uh, as an end, as corrected and the special meeting for ten twenty nine. Two thousand twenty five is special.
Uh, send it all. Roll call.
Horta?
Yes.
Wilson?
You're.
Pencil?
I'm saying.
Smelter, Richard?
Yes.
And charters?
Yes.
Um. Okay, approval of those. We're gonna be. Late.
I'll make a motion to approve prepaid vouchers by eight zero five eight through five eight zero four nine three H R eight nine one five three. We're nine one seven eight, the amount probably. Forty seven thousand seven hundred sixty nine dollars, eighty eight cents of which eight thousand eight seventy eight point one for diesel tax. Payable voucher four three two two five through four three three two five. P F P eight eighty, eight ninety two, the amount of. Hundred eighty four thousand, six hundred eighty five dollars, ninety cents of which ninety eight thousand, two hundred sixty one dollars, eighty seven cents for wages. Uh, twenty seven thou. Twenty seven thousand, three hundred ninety two dollars, twenty two cents for employee retiree benefits. Two thousand five hundred eight dollars, sixteen cents for employee deductions. And twenty two thousand, twenty four dollars, eleven cents for federal tax deposits. Thirty four thousand, five hundred thirty three cents from.
I'll say it.
Any questions? Roll call.
Wilson?
Yo.
Pencil?
Yes.
Smelter, Richard?
Yes.
Charters?
Yes.
Horta?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve voucher five eight zero oh nine four through five eight one five one in the amount three hundred eighty five thousand, nine hundred dollars and fifteen cents.
Start in.
Any questions? Roll call.
Pencil?
Yes.
Smelter, Richard?
Yeah.
Charters?
Yes.
Horta?
Yes.
Wilson?
You're.
Okay. Our council member re-orders are going to be kind of short this. Good deal.
Uh, personnel, meat, finance. I mean, we're. Water, sewer, did that eat? My information. Uh, that only, uh, there was not approved, uh, meeting notice put out. The president sort of just had, uh, just a bit of a discussion. It was, uh. It moved on. It was basically in the same topic, except you can kind of just chat about. About. Some worked out, some of the white, but it's just a discussion. There's no decisions made, no actions. And then, um, my attendant blew up. Uh, the blue apartment continues to move along very nicely. Uh, we're at about forty five percent completion. We have, um. The head hurts building, uh, constructed. Uh, it's getting finished off. Uh, of the interior with electrical and mechanical, getting the doors on. The area we needed has been delivered and set in place for to service that building. The U V building has been constructed. The underground's been completed and backfilled. The temporary. De-watering system removed, so things are moving along quite nicely. They are very much on schedule. It should be complete. As, uh. As planned in, uh, the, uh, June time for annual issue. Uh, Marina Authority met. Uh, there's a synopsis in Josh's superintendent's report. And there's a, uh, resolution in today's packet. Uh, generally what we discussed, we're keeping, uh, some of the rates the same, uh, in the same category that they were last year. Uh, not increasing. The, the rates will, uh, increase slightly, but only because of, uh, some inflation things, but we didn't. Move up any categories on either the seasonal or the transient slips. We, uh. Discussed, uh, some of the upcoming projects that we need to address. Uh, with, uh, the shed and moon to address. And, uh, discuss some of the ongoing engineering that's going on that we got a grant for earlier this year. So that's moving along. Uh, we discussed some personnel. Uh, contracts within the, uh, the. Marina Authority and we tabled those to find out. And, uh, generally it was a good organizational meeting there and, uh. Josh, I don't know if there was anything to add to that. I think you covered that quite well, so that's my report.
Finance, we did have a meeting this afternoon, um. To just go over, met over at the fire station to go over their budgets because we did have a, uh. Advisory board meeting and we're working, I don't know. M O U memorandum of understanding for the fire department, which we never had. Uh, so we are usually a template from another entity and applying ourselves to it. We, uh. Had a very good meeting on that and the results of that was, is why we had the finance meeting today is because. The advisory board is asking for some data and stuff like that, um, so. We're working on that as well as working on the budget, so. We're. We're diligently on the. Threat clearly, uh, we will be having our finance meeting in December. Just had a thickly day just doing. Grant committee did not need tree board. We did need, uh, we had Mr. Resnick from. The high school attend, which was great because he brought. Uh, different times, um, students that want to take part of it. Uh, and, uh. We're in the process of taking the bags of the trees, uh. Scheduling trees for the spring. We need to, uh, clean out. The nursery, uh, we've got to do something about. When we re-cot. A ceiling into a bigger pot. We're leaving holes and people will step into those, so. We're, we're working on that, so that's pretty much it for that. I did, uh, attend the housing. Committee, uh. Meeting, uh, I might get permission on council to ask Josh or Josh, Jay to fill us in on that, uh. Cause I had to leave early and I couldn't finish the meeting, so, um. Would you, would you mind, Jay?
Sure.
Recording?
Uh, so we do meet, um, the husband, if you even like to join us. We do meet on the second Tuesday of each month at eleven o'clock. Here is the hall. Certainly welcome anyone to. To be there with us as we look at housing in the future. Um, a few different, uh, things are going on. One of them is. Uh, discussion about the management company at Edison Crossing is probably. One of the biggest issues we're talking about right now. And there's been some. Challenges with T M management group, uh, managing, uh, Edison Crossings. We have. One of our members, Samantha O'Brien. Uh, he is a resident at Edison Crossing, so. We have some experiences that she's passed to us that have unfortunately not been favorable. Uh, Josh circled back to Mishna. Um, to Amy Hubby, who's the director of Mishna, to see if there were any, if there were any challenges with T M. And, uh, come to find out that they have, they've really been listed as an improved management company for any. Mishna project in Michigan, so we are somewhat concerned. Uh, about that, um, and so we are, um, engaging in conversation with. Home stretch in Traverse City, uh, to see if it's a possibility for. Home stretch to be, to be a regional management company. To assume management of, of Edison Crossings. Which would be a, a large undertaking for that, um. That nonprofit, but they do have support of, uh, of someone, another, another larger manager group, management group that they would, um, partner with. I can't recall the name right now. Uh, so that's under way and in the conversation. You and Josh may have. Something, some update on, you know, the, this past week. Uh. I know that is not a big.
We're gonna start moving towards that transition, see if there's a possibility. You know, it's asset management, there's some more information with that name, but that's the, the partner entity that would be home stretch and they have a good factor, so. Um, we're hoping that it's starting to enjoy nicer relationships.
Thank you. I think it's important for this community to know that there is a challenge there. There are ninety. Austin is ninety five, ninety six.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, Jay. I actually crashed and standing here.
They're, they're.
East street?
East and.
Oh, sir. Oh, they're, they're both.
They're both.
Okay. Chance some less.
Do you mean?
We have ninety six total.
All three.
There's, we're twenty four down here and twenty six. In the middle.
So that certainly is something that's in our focus currently and we'll keep an eye on and report monthly. Uh, Josh, that's information yours. And anything that he hears, so we want to be very supportive of any partnership if we need one to take that, um. Company to a new level of taking care of their residents and serving our community. Um, we also are excited to report that, uh. Lake and Main Apartments, um. Are having a hundred percent occupied. Um, occasionally they have people moving out of our community. Uh, they have had, uh, some other issues with not paying the rent, so we had one eviction, unfortunately. Um, but those units are being filled, uh, mostly the, uh. Departures, so we know the demand is certainly there and a great, um, support for our community. To have those workforce attainable rental units available. Um, and then, uh, moving on, we have a very exciting, uh. Opportunity for this city and for the school system. Is that we have been talking to, um, the school, Frankfurt Everly Area Schools. For some time about, um, to make lots of the school loans on Hall Street. About creating, uh, teacher, um. Uh, support staff housing. And, uh, so we are exploring, uh, with, um, home stretch partnerships between the school and home stretch to develop.
Which we did have, being Schindler was at the meeting and. One of the lists.
Yeah, so Amy was, Amy was there, um, and she's one of. Uh, three other board members on our committee along with Jeff Houseley to, uh. Explore, um, this possible relationship. Between the school and home stretch, uh, so they're meeting, uh, next week on Tuesday. Um, to, uh, really outline M O U that would at least get things started in discussion between the two entities. Um, and we formed a small committee on the housing, uh, commission, uh. Uh, myself and, uh, Steve, um, is on that committee. And Samantha is an alternate on that committee, so, so we'll be meeting, uh, with the school next week. Uh, see if we can advance that, uh, if it looks favorable, then home stretch. Will be making a presentation to, uh, the school or the, uh, December, uh, next meeting, so. I think that sums it up for us.
About your, um. My first homes.
We, uh, yeah, that's part of our report. I can report on that monthly back to album mission. The housing trust events, we, uh, we're building four homes on Corning between Corning and Ninth Street. And we, uh, delayed that project. We have everything completed in the ground foundations. All underground utility connections made. Uh, we delayed that project for about a month, uh. Um, pending a possible grant that we wrote with Mishna, was a significant grant. And certainly warranted any delay of, of construction. Unfortunately, we just learned we were not recipients of the grant. It was oversubscribed. And, uh, and in essence, Mishna ran out of money to go that could get to our. Request, uh, though it was very favorably received by Mishna. And strong encouragement to reapply. Uh, in October when that round that opens up again. So that'll align with our next neighborhood project that we're working on right now. So, uh, back to, uh, Corning, the, the cottages at Corning. Uh, those four, the two bedroom, um, one bath and two bed, or one and a half bath. With a one car garage, those will be completed this spring. We hope to have those, um, new homeowners welcoming in, new homeowners in May. So it's an exciting project. Um, for, uh, for our man trust.
So I wanted you your date.
Uh, December eighth. I just got it out today. Um, we were hoping for the first, but they pushed us to the eighth. So we're, we're hoping if you have any control over the weather, favorable conditions. Those homes to start.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
So. Uh, we'll be.
Public safety, we did nothing this month. Uh, record, uh, we did meet, um. Went over just some basic stuff, finalized dog park signs, uh, looked into. The benches for the dog park. We're gonna coach the new shop teacher at the school and see if he has any interest, if the students do and. Maybe build those benches because they are extremely expensive. Yeah, I mean, that's good.
And we approved the signs.
We approved the signs, um. We just, uh, had an update on, you know, the bathroom, Lake Michigan Beach bathroom. Uh, that's all for bid. Not much else on record at the moment. Uh, airport. Uh, if you guys haven't noticed, uh, there's a lot of trees getting. Taking down around the airport. That is, uh, asking for navigation eastman and, uh, that project is. Not quite completed up close. So. The other thing about the airport, uh, let's see, there's meter consolidation out there that's costing us a lot of money. We have. Fourteen electric meters and pay individually for them, so. Waiting on Bishop Electric to go ahead and consolidate those down to one meter. Um, and we also allocated five thousand dollars for a new food product.
Oh, did you?
Yes.
We're in the middle of two, which suddenly.
What?
Sound news or?
Yeah, we're, we're kind of looking on. We're shopping far and wide for, uh, a relatively cheap, but effective. And people actually like.
I thought I read in the minutes of the county that you're disposing of a vehicle, but I don't think that's what it was.
Okay. Or is it officially finally? Not that. Remise feeding anyone? Yeah. Even can go over wrong.
Okay, thank you. Um, commissioner's report. First statement.
Um, so our new council members.
Yes, thank you.
Um, so, uh. One thing I wanted to just highlight is that the board of commissioners did meet with the. Uh, Grand Trevor's Band of Ottawa, Illinois, and, um. That went to town very well. We found that we have a lot in common, that we are each facing housing infrastructure and economic development. Items. One moment. See. Else, um. Um, Dick Taylor addressed the board of commissioners about some concern he's hearing from some folks that, um. Around Point Betsy Lighthouse, uh, one is that there was only one bidder. And this was discussed at previous, um, meetings that, um, were actually, uh, really happy with the bidder who did bid, um. They had, uh, bid previously and at that time. The friends weren't, uh, really enthusiastic about them because they didn't have a lot of big. Projects under their belts, but since then, because this has been a very long process, they have had some of those bigger projects. Um, just their enthusiasm and professionalism and organization, organization, um, has really impressed, uh, the friends and. Even us when they came to, uh. To present to us, so.
Was that bear V A I R V, they said.
So there are a Traverse City. Yes, I think that is correct.
The person, okay.
And, um, it was also, um. Uh, some other things that, uh, he, uh, has overheard too, that people have, uh, said to him is why isn't the county paying for this? Um, again, uh, we discussed that in previous board of commissioners meeting that, um. We just simply don't have two million, two million dollars lying about. Um, and so, uh, we need help and, um, the commission, um, did work to get some grants. Um, which is nearing its expiration and so. Well, we're kind of back at this crisis situation, so we are meeting the board of commissioners, excuse me, an ad hoc committee of. Board of Commissioners and the friends to kind of discuss this a little bit more.
Okay, can you stick to Rockley and try this so full of, uh. This, they're all briefly.
Yes, so it is, um. So. What they have now is, uh, a breakwater that has to come out. And, um, they are putting in some rock. There's some rock already there. They're also putting some more rock in. They're putting an apron. Around so that when the waves come up, it can come up on that apron instead of. What we currently have. It sounds like maybe some tie locks might have to be moved. I don't know, but, um. Um. Anyway, um, that's the big thing. And so the big cost of this is those rocks. Uh, we discussed also, um, going with Alpena, who is a little closer than say. Um, Wisconsin, however, those rocks in Alpena are not what we need. And so they have. Uh, veins in them, um, with sandstone, and so when. You know, things. Wash up on them, they're gonna act splattered and then they're gonna turn into little bits, uh, bits. And so these are not the quality that we need for that. Um, they can use those maybe a bit deeper. Um. But yeah, we're gonna have to source from Wisconsin, and so that's a matter of transporting it, which is, so the big, the big cost is the big rocks. And transporting big rocks. Big rocks are. The cost. So, Paul?
Beaver Eye.
I do not know the answer to that.
The bigger person to talk to.
You said fog with F O G?
Yeah. And it might be G or something weird like that, so.
Okay, thank you. I'll know that. Thank you. Um, something else is that, uh, the county approved a public land ordinance for Benzey County. And this is also timely because, uh, we are looking at the. And this is also timely because uh we are looking at the Chris Lake Outlet project, which will need um something for that as well. So. That was good, um also something. Feels timely as well as a storm management and debris plan, as you know, our our friends to the north had um. A bit of a. A bit of an issue there, and so um now we have a plan as well, so that's that's very good. As we've been discussing, the equalization director position. Um what we really wanted is somebody who could be in-house, who could be local. And um who could help our relatively new equalization department. And we we have found that person. I am blanking on his name, but I believe his last name is Beach, Mr. Beach. Um he luckily has also found housing in Manistee. So he is renting an apartment in Manistee, and it seems like everything is aligning. And um we hired him at our very last meeting, so we will have somebody who is here onsite. Um and that was something that was very important to our our departments within. Uh the county to have somebody local because they really rely on equalization. Alright. We also. Um had a discussion with our tax advisory committee, um. So uh as you all know, what we have. Um has been an issue, we um are currently um continually rolling back. And um that committee is looking at recommending a one point two mil increase. For our general fund, which will be a net point eight mil increase.
What do you say for again?
That's for our general fund, the county's general fund. Um i- i- as you know, we've been kind of working on that. So yes, it that was just a discuss- a discussion, I'm sure that discussion will continue at a study session. Um. Because there's a, there's a lot um going on with that. Can we approve the final plan of the Chris Lake Out- Outlet Project, and so we are going to um go ahead with the request of proposals? Um the last thing I want to talk about with materials management. One thing that um came about the meeting last time is. Um we were talking about. Household cabinet space and Benzie County only holds two of those events. And one thing that kind of came out is, boy, I mean, you know, maybe we should be holding more of those, Grand Travers holds five. Um Lelandoff holds four. Um the thing is, is Benzie County cannot afford to do anything more than two. Um and so what also came out of that is we don't. Have enough money to support our current levels of recycling initiatives, and we are gonna run out of money in three years. At our current levels, so um we're get uh. We're gonna need to figure out um as a county what we want to do there.
So when you're talking down the recycling, you're not. We're not necessarily just uh having that to the household hazardous waste, you're talking about them. The recycle bins that are in general occasions.
So. Right, so as we sit, you know, with our recycle bins, the household hazardous waste events with. Um paying for our recycling coordinator with um our local. Um. Was was like um materials management committee, you know, all of those things that we fund, all of those things, the new signs that went up. You know, all of these things that that we do under. Um under the county. Is not sustainable, um we're gonna run out of money in three years, so either we have to look at cutting services. Or possibly a mill, I don't know. But it hasn't even really been discussed yet, but um that was really poignant to me. Um and so I'm definitely going to be looking into that. And we'll see what's to be for that.
Yeah, yeah, it goes really, really.
I agree with you, yeah. Any other questions for me?
Still a question on solid base. If there was consideration to change for that public act or involved, which is with that, they increased revenue?
What did I, I I honestly don't know that, I I'm not familiar with that, that is one thing that we ask to be um. Educated on on our next meeting, because yeah, Traverse City uses that, they use a. Uh landfill fee to. The landfill is fifty, I think it's called, anyway, it's a landfill fee, and so basically, um when you go to the landfill and you pay your amount to get rid of. Your garbage, that is funding Grand Travers County's recycling program. Um so here, what we do is we, and so they can do both commercial and residential, and so we use. Um. A public act. I can't remember, P A sixty nine or something, sixty something. Yes, we have a public act, and that one is restricted to just residential. We can only um tax up to, I believe, twenty-five dollars um a household. And so that is how we fund what we all love and use today. Um but unfortunately, that is not enough for. The services we provide.
So what's your alternative?
I I how I see it, it's either we ask for a mileage, Lelandoff does that, they've asked for a mileage um to um. Tax up to fifty dollars a household. However, they don't, they aren't quite up to that level, we go at thirty-seven dollars.
What if? You included the commercial districts, any businesses in on and do so that. They would need to use it because that really is a problem.
Yes, so what we would have to do is we would have to stop taxing under that public act. Then we would have to move to. Something else. I I don't know.
Liberation there, that's similar, but. Us personal users, but I don't know what the per parcel fee or all that's done.
I I don't either, I don't either, so.
Right, and you travel, you need to do that now before your town all around.
Yeah.
Are you able to track cost? For locale?
So um.
What's the cost? For you guys to supply a service that brain for? Uh.
We're, well, we're the user. Yeah, you're a long time. Because we are having a user.
Yeah, so um I. I I don't know that off the top of my head, um you know, um.
Katie probably will be able to get that in for me.
Yes, and we have a budget for that, um right now we're dipping into our. Our fund balance for that bucket. So that's why I'm saying it's not sustainable, it's because we're dipping into that fund balance, um so yes, if. There's a lot of things that um go into that. I think even um Dave had to do some. Uh groundwork over Thompsonville, and he basically did that for a bono. With his own little tractor and.
Correct.
Kind of level things up because we just don't have. We don't have any little room. Um but yes, I I don't know exactly how much it costs, but yes, um the the more we use rights, the more costly it is.
And and remember, we we agreed to file.
Right, right.
The reindeer sex.
Right, so that they had. Yes, that's all in our regional.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to the department. Um reports, Chris, what for you?
First, I wanna congratulate.
Yeah.
Jenna and Pete and Julian. Congratulations. Um just a few statistics on the election in November, um my report is online, um. But we had one thousand one hundred eighteen registered voters. Of that, four hundred fifty people voted, which was equates to forty point two five percent voter turnout, which is actually an increase of three point five five percent. Um over the last election in twenty twenty-three. Um majority, we only had hundred fifty-six people that voted in person, and the remainder was absentee ballots. Uh let's see, we did receive a uh award from T D F. Or from, sorry, from uh we received the Starlight. Award of Vigilant Stewards from Michigan Fair Elections Institute. Um they did an independent study of T D F, which is our qualified voter file. And they found seventeen percent of the one thousand. One hundred thirty jurisdictions that have over one thousand registered voters. We were up to hundred ninety-seven that did not have any duplicate voters. Which is a good thing, and my name may be on the certificate, but kudos goes to Jennifer Walters, who is my deputy clerk. Um she does a great job um in her efforts in maintaining that between the two of us, but truly couldn't do it without her. Um. Anniversaries, Greg Walton, he is in our public D P W. He is been there, he's, this is his night here with the city. Um and Jennifer Walters in December is going to be at her tenure for with the city.
Okay.
Uh for sure.
Well, and Greg was our summer, for how many years before that?
I think it was six or seven.
Yeah.
Was it ten?
And so you've got.
Made the transition very seamless, but.
Yeah, sure.
Uh software updates started on the twenty-seventh. We're getting there. Um please bear with us still. It um it's new, I think I'm faster on the old one, but as I explained earlier, I think muscle memory, once we get it. Be just as fast. Um finding the reports that are now made a little bit differently and building all of our new reports, kind of in transition over. Um Amy's done a fantastic job of doing that, Jen's been kind of keeping us together and. It's really thankful, Shannon actually took time and did some, sat in on some of the classes, so some calls about water bill. She says they have to transfer it, she's like, I can do it, so um great team. Uh we'll be having election inspectors training in here tomorrow, um.
Time is a lot.
From one to four.
Oh.
Um. There's. The reasoning being is that with early voting, we're gonna need all hands on board, because who wants to spend. In August, eight hours in this building in August, there's so much going on outside, so we're hoping to split that into four hours at a time. Um and so to build that roster is 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 important. Um taxes collected is at ninety-five point two nine percent for our summer taxes, which is fantastic. Um as noted, they uh received our circuit court. Um. Judgment to be able to remove the uncollectible personal property taxes. Um thank you Karen Burns from Benzie County, uh I'm sorry, from Benzie Township, treasurer. Uh she organized the project, so thank you to Karen, it was significant, we worked together with seven other communities. And spent five hundred fifty-seven dollars, had we done that by ourselves, it would have been almost, it was over three thousand. So it's great that she was able to put that together for us. And just a quick reminder that city hall will be closed on Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving. Please note that. Our water bills usually due on the twenty-seventh, but because of everything, it'll be December first after. Oh, so you have a show December first. Are there any questions?
No, well.
Chris?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions that don't quite pertain to your report.
Okay.
Um. One is um. Having been looking on to the way to council and operate some stuff together for a short time now. Not being a part of council, um. Kind of move us more into the technology uh. Era. Um. I'm wondering your thoughts on. It makes sense to. Issue each council member a notebook or iPad of some sort, so that we can correspond. The chronically more, you can issue these packets electronically instead of printing these all out and taking the time to find them.
Uh. That is how the calling does theirs, every commissioner and the administrator and the clerk. I guess the court doesn't have, but uh everything, the whole habit is on. Uh. Be like a notebook.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, on on that. New words saved. Uh a lot of paper and stuff.
So Chris, you do this, I mean.
It was discussed years ago, and then we had some individuals on council that were tech savvy and. Um I don't think, I don't think it's a bad idea. Um I would still like to do almost like a main book, because we actually save these. Um digitally and other, then we'd have digital copy, which is a plus.
Yeah.
But we'd also have paper copy too, um. I don't see, I mean, we could definitely do an analysis for it, because time putting these together, printing and such and so on.
Paper.
Is 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 costly, um depending on, I think I looked at iPads because I was thinking about Christmas. Um there was one that was a twelve inch that was like three thirty-five. And it was just an iPad, it was a Lipton Elite one, or have you, it's just general, um depending on what you'd want to put on it.
What about the notebook, like, the like, I see. Which kind of was we have?
Um the one like I have, I would push it a little, little more, but those would work.
Yeah.
Forever. I mean, it's healthy.
Something simple you could use immediately, I mean.
No, no.
Well, what I would do is I would definitely want to consult, because it's not my, in my wheelhouse.
Right.
Definitely consult, Chris.
What about the tech? You and Josh work together on giving a call, just. For example.
Um and and with that, um. Chris, I know I talked to you about it, but. Uh maybe talk to um the I T people about what it would take to. Bump us up a new number of email addresses we can have, and again, I'm looking at security, we shouldn't be operating off our. Individual Gmail accounts. And city business should not be on your personal web, so was there?
No, it's not believable.
No, it's.
No.
Um, yes, I know we didn't do D P W, we didn't give Aaron the map, so it's right on the cusp. To be able to give emails and it was like greater cost. That was three I T people ago, so I'm gonna have to dig in and do some research and find out who the domain, I know the domain is, you know, C O F I R G E dot net.
Right.
But who actually facilitates that, that's gonna be my question, so those are the two things I'll ask Chris about, get with Chris, get with Josh.
Okay.
And go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just some ideas and yeah.
Just cost, yeah.
Plus, plus the other thing that's advantageous with that, because we use our copier. Those we get charged per, I mean, it's minimal, but we get charged per.
Page.
Copy we make per page, whether it's color or not.
Right.
Um that's also could be potential cost savings there, I think between the two, between buying the iPad or what have we, we have. And that, I think, it's going to probably even out. But over time, I think it will beneficial.
Right.
And you know, as far as making taps and all that in P D F. Chris will have to go to school. Spend a while, something. So, yeah.
Alright. Thank you. Anything else for Chris, or Chris, you got anything else to add?
No, the staff is doing a great job, I mean, I just, we threw a lot of them, they've asked, can we go back to dot net?
No.
Um but it's learned, so.
Well, it will, it will get there.
Get there, it has a lot of herbs.
Um. Hey, Josh.
Alright, congratulations to Jenna and Pete for joining, for being elected for the city council. Enjoy working and collaborating with all of you to enhance the wellbeing of this community, so I'm excited. How about the opportunities that lay ahead? The Michigan Avenue project is is shut down for the winter, we got about maybe twenty percent of that done. Um.
It looks really.
Yeah, they did a great job and. And you know, what what led to Michigan Avenue raising up on our priority was, especially from San Andreas, what we. Well, six years ago. Did an asset management plan for our San Andreas sewer distribution system, as well as Chalmers Sewer Distribution, we received a grant for that. Um but allowed us to to really. Inventory and prioritize where our needs were. In the San Andreas Storms Sewer Distribution System and Michigan Avenue was was a high priority, but while we were laying a new main, um the old one's problem. So it was perfect timing, um the classes family had a had a root intrusion backup as soon as we were connecting their new lead, so. Uh the timing was impeccable on that, um. It was a major inconvenience and I and I apologize for that with residents, and we're gonna have to do a better job on the next stretch. To ensure that we have driveway access, there's gonna be less availability to the turnaround area and of course, that area. Um so we're gonna have longer stretches of. Of less areas to be able to maneuver around the site, so we'll work diligently with with elders on that. Um with this project comes a remashing of of traffic on Michigan Avenue, um. We have newer residents in that area, so I've been having conversations about, you know, eliminating. We have newer residents in that area, so I've been having conversations about, you know, eliminating of. Traffic I've never dealt. You know. We've been through this in the past, um. And you know, we tried speed bumps, um, the speed bump worked, but the noise that speed bumps create uh, was more of a nuisance than the speed itself, so. Uh, in my report, I listed some, maybe some things that we can discuss in the community. You know, believe it or not, we cannot institute a fifteen mile an hour speed zone. Without going through an approval process for the state of Michigan. And the statutory requirements that, that provide guidance on that is associated with mobile home parks. And in park areas, so we might be in a good position to modify the speed at fifteen because Michigan Avenue provides access. To Lake Michigan Beach at, at three different locations.
So, would you be able to, like, I think Main Street should be different, finger ouch. Okay, but. And we don't know, of course. Because those are the most used.
Well, we could look at some of logistics, um, I mean, no question on Michigan Avenue, you know, what's nice about Michigan Avenue, it, it's. It's narrow, but it allows traffic, but it requires you to slow down, it's a traffic calming mechanism. Um, we are gonna reduce some of the on-street parking in certain areas to make it better visibility, plus you have the intersections. Uh, we also have an opportunity upon the outer portion. Between Winnebago and Nipissing where we could do a mid-black. Concrete mound type crosswalk. Uh, which would certainly slow traffic down as it comes down the hill, should be installed. Little vents, but uh.
You know, a few years ago, down this road. And it was made or they're that request, we want to keep that open. And quite frankly, I'm getting tired of hearing about it, I'm a person who moves to the neighborhood and. I see no reason to take this back to the public and bring it up. Um, I agree with you, a greater sign doesn't help, we have a stop sign at the top. Changing to fifteen miles per hour. Probably a good move. I'm not opposed to the, the crosswalk mound or whatever you want to call that, especially with redoing, um. Have or, Michigan Avenue now, that could actually probably for zero cost. Because we're tearing up the road anyways. The other important reason to keep it open, as you said, it's gonna be a challenge while we're doing. Work there to keep people coming in to, to, to get to their houses and. If it's closed after a hill and something were to happen, there's not another way to interact. And, you know, it, again, we've been down this road.
Well, I, I really wanted to share some of the conversations I've had. You know, and I think there's some, some opportunities there to make things better. So, we will, to have that conversation still. Uh, the core engineers, exciting news, I'm gonna need to meet some representatives of the core engineers. It's Greatwater, um, they're, they're moving along with their design, so they're gonna provide us some detail on that. Um, last conversation I had, and I'll learn more tomorrow, but it's still almost like we're on track for. For upgrades to Greatwater in twenty twenty seven. Hopefully, we, we get proper appropriations in Congress for that, maybe this could be like a thirty million dollar project. Um, they would probably do it in phases, maybe do a section from the shore to the elbow, one phase, maybe the elbows appear in the other. Um, based on some of their specifications, the, the section that the, the lighthouse sits on is in amazing shape structure. But they're talking about widening it. Raising the elevation, um. There obviously are some concerns whether or not water flows through, so when it was originally designed, it had batterboards that prohibited water to flow through, but over time. Those have been damaged and rotted, and so we have areas where water does flow through. And I know that for a fact, I swam from one end to the other, um, kid. Um, so that was a conversation that, that, that data I had would go with the core on that. Yeah, so.
One tomorrow.
One o'clock tomorrow. So I'll keep you posted on how that, um. Plan on joining Bumblebee or Chili potentially.
I've been there through snow.
Yeah. So on Friday, I, I received a email from Senator Peter's office. And he was gonna be meeting with the, the Commandant with the Coast Guard on Wednesday. And it was requested to submit a letter. Stating the position of our community in regards to the Coast Guard station, as many of you know. Back in two thousand sixteen, they diverted our station to a seasonal station along with Huntington. And then as time progressed, uh, went conceivable to no presence. Um, everything would be in, um, based out of Man City right now for both Frank and Huntington. You know, and obviously we wanna, we wanna ensure that our long-term goal will be to return that back to a man's station.
Which, your letter was excellent.
I'll, I'll make comments put in your S box, um, it's a combination of something I wrote two thousand sixteen and then. Updated it, uh, for this purpose, so, so hopefully we can make movement, you know, some of the feedback we got from the credit center. More recently is they, they're having a significant struggle with, with people enlisting. You know, kind of like we struggle with getting employees in our businesses, they're having a struggle getting service people enlisted, so.
Well, and. Generally, it's a little off topic, but, um. So what if they could do a. A stack of less people and they're sure enough from like the fire departments or. Well, that's apartment or the sheriff's department.
That's certainly something we gotta talk to because they have this, this, this crew of twelve. And, and, and we can, we can do a lot with a, a less crew. And, and if we can get ourselves in a situation where we collaborate, we've always historically done amazing collaboration, but they're not here. You know, in, in, most importantly, we, we've done a lot of ice water rescue training.
Right.
That's solely in those now.
That were at Brankford Station and just moved them down to Man City.
Yeah, so. Yeah. Same amount as far as I know, I mean, that might have been reduced over time just because the changes we're dealing with on a national level, but. I'm not privy to that, but I'm sure we could find out. And, and so we don't, we shouldn't lose focus. And get complacent just because we're in a situation where they're not here, we need to continue to be heard in Washington.
Well, I, we might, why encourage the community in the near future and do a ladder campaign?
Well, it says a lot when seven former Coast Guard chiefs came to retire. So that says a lot about our community and, and one of the things that we're trying to point. Um, town homes is, is a lot of these enlisted personnel, they're, they come from a multitude of backgrounds, but they get a sense of community when they come to.
Yeah.
Towns like Brankford, you know, so it's, it's more than the life-saving aspect, it's, it's. It's enhancing their character and giving them a good experience in, in communities like ours, so. Uh, we'll continue to, to have that collaboration with Senator Peter's office and. And, uh, representative of our Congressman Burton as well. Um, had excellent bids for the bathroom, I'll talk more about that in the business, very pleased with the business, four bids. Uh, three of them are really close to each other, um. Great numbers, but we'll go into more detail on their new business. I, I did want to bring to everyone's attention, we, we initiated a few years ago. A sidewalk removal program in certain areas of the city where there was high traffic, then twenty four or James Street schools. Um, Crystal Avenue down to Main Street. Um, everything was great during those years where we had mild winter, low costs, last year we kind of. You know, we, we did, we weren't getting invoiced in a routine manner and, uh, significant expense, so. I think I already had that conversation with the contractor we work with, just so we're, we're. Doing a better job at, at following the costs, but. You know, we, we may need to make a decision on, on reducing that area or, or. To stay in line with our budgetary needs, so that's one of the bring that to everyone's attention, this was kind of a pilot project.
I'd like to be involved with some of those discussions, because I think they're pretty really, I need more of a, uh. A sequence to the plan rather than he just kind of does what he does, maybe that could. Cut down the cost, let's get that shirt.
Well, I've had some conversation with our staff. And. You know, there's interest there, if, if we could procure a similar machine, and that's a machine that you can use your own.
Right.
In different capacities. Yeah, so, you know, we get our, our major roofs done and then we can assign somebody to start doing sidewalks and. Might get involved some additional overtime or maybe would involve some contractual employer, um. Situations as well, but maybe it's time for us to start looking in that direction.
You know, it might be worth it to add the machine ourselves, yeah.
Uh, I'm gonna continue to, to have information here about the DPW facility and just. Um, some things that we need to do to extend the use for life of that building, um, recruiting some cost.
You had fifty four thousand.
I know, we need a new lot of stairs.
Then would at least probably do recruit.
Yeah, fix there's a roof and then, uh, move that beyond that, I don't know. exterior and engineer's work, cancel the installation, but also the following, we need to, we need to certain back on that commercial plan. Um, but our, our crews doing an amazing job, they're out there chasing leaves. You know, we're gonna continue to do that as long as the weather allows, our ultimate goals, they get through, uh, face getting with it, but. If there's leaves in the road, we'll, we'll continue to do it until it smells and then unfortunately at that point, you know what's gonna happen. Um, it's gonna go back here, but somehow, some ways over the course of winter, they seem to use their thing and disperse. Um, there might be some minor cleanup in spring involving them, but, uh, crew just does an outstanding job of that. Um, they got their beach done, uh, a little bit early this year. Still pleased with, with everything that, that crews are gonna be considering for winter. You know, and it was a. Couple of years ago, we worked with a contractor to go through and do some valve turning for us. Um, mainly for the purpose of freeing up time for our staff. Um, we've gone through and done that ourselves and we actually found, uh, several valves that were closed, it's impacted our modeling on it. Um, so, uh, we were able to. Revisit that, we, we turned every valve in the city, uh, we had two broken valves, um, that we'll plan to replace this. This spring, but, uh, this is critical for us to come up with an accurate model. Uh, which is a requirement to cement the eagle, so that, that project's moving along. Um, we're working, uh, if we got, I do myself and the Spicer Group. Getting that information up where that. Any questions, uh, you got a lot going on? And it's not all my issues, you know, things we got going on, but, uh. Reports available, I believe it's, uh, uploaded to the, to the website, so. It's exciting, uh, you know, because we spent a, a long time planning our work and now we're working our plan, um.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's, it's a great time, what's going on with housing and. You know, we're at the infrastructure and getting a lot of, uh. Conversations about, definitely not talking to a couple of different folks about the tackle box property. Uh, we're talking to an individual, the lucky property, uh, and several calls that involve, uh, other areas of the East End, so. So things are, are coming together as, as far as, uh, you know, the goals and objectives to be laid out for ourselves. Any questions?
Like you said, it's downloaded that line. And I agree with your work, it's a belated courage. Um, our chief of, uh, police is on vacation, but he didn't consent, um. A report which. I like. Moving on to the fire team.
Congratulations Jenna and Pete and Jalen. Uh, one of the things I wanted to say aside here was, uh. Two, a fire truck is scheduled to be detailed on December eighth, so that's gonna be all. What are the power tower, four towers, that's going against you, and it's a standard requirement that. Based on the size and measures classified as a tower. Uh, so waiting for, so waiting for ISO information, first of all, I just talked to somebody at, uh, Michigan Insurance, gave me contact information. Uh, we can give you that information, so I'm gonna be following up on that this week. It was the way from Max Swanson to provide a bracelet, system information, so I can report it on that. And mainly, I'm asking for crystal thousands from Max Swanson's permission, permission to use the system any part of the, of Canada. And, uh, Max says that we could raise license, I saw last night.
So that'll help everybody, yeah, for you to go down.
Yep, and I've got all the latitude, longitude of all the fire hydrants in the city, you know, heard of. Already mapped on our phones and I've got them all over township and all of Crystal, uh, Crystal Lake Township. And Jones Township, so all those are all there. So the way I'm waiting for these approvals and I'll be able to submit a date for, for home rates in the city, which are in the process right now too soon.
All right.
All working, but every time you open them up, something happens, so I think we got two right now that needs some, they work, so we, we need some parts. And, uh, East Jordan Iron Works, more keys those parts forever.
So we had that fire show street tapped off. We had W, uh, who were involved near the side, we could give you a little question, it's, it's around Tom and her.
Well, it was B Street.
B Street.
It did? Yeah, the northern areas do, do experience that, so that's, that's.
Resolution, I had a resolution under requesting that house review seeking, uh, thermal energy cameras. And we got a couple of them, but, uh, we. Should have them in every extended one of their trucks, they need to do a complete, they have three sixty to determine the temperature. Rate of smoke, low of the heat, lower in buildings, call the sent personnel on the side. When I fired, uh, this last Sunday, we assisted the station five with. We were literally, you know, we're cruising well. We were assisting, there was four of us that went inside that building as well, with the two people present, we did interior check. Uh, on that structure, we saved, uh, the structure's lost, a lot of powder not completely lost. So we saved the bed as an area problem, but we have some, some things that are valuable that we should, that we can, that they can help with, I hope like, who should.
Do you know anyone that owned that, that house?
Yeah, I did not know, I know that they, uh, law enforcement got information and they kind of, they.
Like, what's the thermal energy camera cost?
Thermal energy camera cost right now, about five thousand. First one we lost at fifteen grades, so they, they saved them down, uh, nice, lot of help. I'm afraid, I heard about my reports, uh, the number of calls from D E S and, uh, the fire. Uh, the city has had twenty eight D O S calls, so we're actually a lot higher than we had last now. Uh, and fire one that we had, this is, we have ten calls, we give you that number. And then maybe the breakdown of what the fire call for and medical call to access the information, get the information. Break it down as to how many, that calls from the other. So the party totals for the last about forty five D O S calls from other fire calls, we're currently right now at. Seven hundred and fifty two, well, seven, yeah, seven hundred, seven hundred, well, eighty two calls.
And last year was like.
Real close to what we did last year, we're actually probably within, uh, ten for last year. People are moving in that direction. And, uh, some areas that I've worked on in the community are listed there, some things that I do. Um, Friday, we're gonna be getting the kindergarten students, first, second, third. Grades like coming to the fire station, we're down on the twenty sixth, I've returned with Heidi. Uh, today over at the library, we're gonna have, uh. Uh, should I do a, um. How, on the way, reading what, uh, the library gives for reading, it's gonna be. At the fire station on its twenty sixth of January, that's it. And normally on Mondays, they have a meeting, uh, session with the day on nights. And then, uh. Here's, uh, I'm trying to end up with two news. Chief notes, and I, I want I can throw up the best of all, yesterday, Chris gave the, uh, he gave a copy of this. Card from the Crystal Lake Church, he said, your firefighters and first responders, we are so thankful through you, the hard work you've poured into our church. Over five hours trying to put the fire out of a very second. Your attention to safety, our well-being, so appreciate, appreciated, and all of our people were saved. Thank you for your willingness to leave, we truly bring it help us, our community is blessed to have. You in such an important role, you know, physicians who are protectors. You are our, within your position, you are our protectors and our heroes, God bless you with the same peace, hope and love. You are our, within your position, you are our protectors and our heroes, God bless you with the same peace, hope and love. That you bring to my society, thank you, Mr. Richard.
You're gonna uh, using, that's only a township for the short term.
Yeah, they said that, yeah, they're they're going up.
Anything else for my third question? Thank you, Mike. Uh, all business, there is none. Under reviews, we have a housing commission appointment. Uh, I will make a law forward. For you, in no second is needed to appoint Ed Corella to the housing commission for a one-year term. Set to expire eleven eighteen twenty five. It should be twenty six, okay, just reading what was saying, sorry. Okay, uh, roll call please.
Smelter Richard, yes, charters.
Yes.
Porta.
Yes.
Wilson.
Next item is council meeting date and time determination. Currently, we are the third Tuesday of the month, um. Uh, at five P M.
And I did provide, there's here, I've given to you throughout the first few, we gave, they made just a little synopsis of twenty twenty six. Some dates that the, has to do with election or that were closed. Um, to just give an idea and just to clarify, you have how many firsts, seconds, thirds seem to be pretty light, so. Um, is that to the city council or?
I would like to use, difficult are current schedule.
Except for maybe the one, we stood at five o'clock.
Okay, any other discussion, roll call?
Charters.
Yeah.
Hold up.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yeah.
Pencil.
Yes.
Smelter Richard, yes.
And before we move to the next one, in the front of your packet was uh committees. Uh, you will select what you wish to serve on. And uh, put it in my mailbox by December first. We appreciate, and when at the next meeting, we'll decide.
Who's on what?
Who's on what? We forgot to mention that, okay? And I'll try and end my guess to honoring your wishes once ahead of. Okay, uh, next item, Grand Travers Band Ottawa, the Chippewa Grant Application. This is for the police department and Josh.
Historically, every year, we apply for a two percent funding to the entry fan of watchable audience. Uh, usually involves a prior department request, a long course request, and then. Form of a general request, uh, sometimes it's partner direct, sometimes it's, it's also submitting on the gap, but not profit. This year, uh, for the for the police department, Chief Cass. Wanted to submit a grant to the Grand Traver Fan of Watchable Audience, a purpose for body worn cameras. Uh, the total budget for the purchase would be approximately twenty four thousand five hundred dollars. With the local leverage, possibly twenty five hundred dollars being expended from unused wages. Um, it's always good with that grant application to show, uh, share into it and give it looks at more favorably, as been our experience. Uh, we received a lot of these drinks this year, uh, on the park recreation side. Um, require things to submit a grant to provide funding that will go towards a handicap accessible. New kayak launch dock at Seven Street Beach above this park. This project was a form of a grant application to the M D N R F for grant. Will be awarded a hundred fifty thousand dollar, uh, but that's gonna involve this, the new restroom, the the wellness sector associated with that. Um, the movie max that we already have in place, and then they can use kayak launches in addition to sign you, so if we're awarded, uh. You know, this, this funding will go towards the purchase of, of uh, maybe that dock, and of course. You know, we we postponed that project to to get the initial beach pod done first. A little while, the longer we wait, the more of these costs go up, but this would. Uh, allow us to secure some funding if we're awarded to go towards that project.
And I do just wanna know, um, Chief Cass and I did work on his, also Mr. Mills. And the twenty five hundred dollars, when it says from unused wages, that for the person. We've been landing it since July first, so there is wages, he has, he definitely has twenty five hundred dollars we put towards it. So just to clarify what that meant.
And then sure, and then for the um, handy hand accessible dock, we will be. Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen of the uh, request. So I did, I did receive an updated price. Just yesterday, it's fifty eight thousand dollars per fifty three nine. So that's what inflation's done to that shit. We could also sell the existing dock, do some of that, it's a couple thousand, although it's a distant dock.
Yeah, we need a thing, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve grant requests as presented with the local. Leverage for a body camera, it's approximately twenty five hundred dollars. Being used to rid from unused waivers, from the local leverage for the. Handy hand accessible dock of approximately fifteen thousand, being submitted from. Line item one oh one, so so zero, those are zero, zeros are eight twenty five, should say.
Now, seven. I I do have a couple of quick, real quick questions, is, is each one of these, the body cameras and the handicap accessible dock? These, I mean, we're approving, so the submit, but they're gonna be separate.
That's sort of way out, right, so the ground. Challenged by they weren't to separate.
And then, and then, and then, historically, uh, just as a maybe a. Off the top of your head, that the average foot, which. On these two percent grants, what, what do we normally get, my mistake? Do we sometimes get as much as sixty thousand here, or or twenty four thousand, or is it more like the fifteen? Maybe ten fifteen, I mean, anything.
Experience has always been, they're, they're, they're really good, maybe five, fifteen. Um, they've funded bigger projects.
Okay, they have.
They have.
Just, and then.
And what I mean, twenty years ago, they gave Alberta a hundred grand for a truck that. It's actually Agent One now, when we collaborated and partnered with Alberta.
And then, is there any downside with uh? Cause I I know we got one for the police, one for the body cams and for, you know, rest, you know, they. I know that we're gonna submit one to the fire, is there any? Is there any downside, I guess, to to submit all three, you know?
Uh, no, no, so, so historically, we've been successful in in all three categories, um. There's been times where they fund two uh, three.
Okay.
Alright, um, you know, it's. Like I, I asked for radar uh signs one, one year, they didn't like that. So I, you know, you know, in situations where it's enhancing community, it's, it's, you know, enhancing accessibility, they like those types of projects. They love funding law enforcement and and fire department. You know, situations that improve firefighter safety.
Right.
Uh, they're big on that kind of stuff. We've been a great part, really.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know.
So, Brady, to answer your question, why it was packaged together, because Chief Cass is gone. I have not done very many of these, and Josh has, so that's why I was looking together, and Josh wrote, wrote them off.
He did. This uh, so.
Any other questions? Roll call then.
Hold up.
Yes.
Watson.
Yep.
Pencil.
Yes.
Smelter Richard, yes, charters.
Yes.
Second one, I strange for everything, I have a law and Chippewa grant application from fire chief.
Yeah. Requesting a lot of any admission, I report, uh, the, from a large chain camera, based on, we're gonna have. Five thousand eight hundred and ninety four dollars, two hundred and four cents, on five percent, uh. That would include it in a store, ninety four dollars, seventy two cents. Which will become a go eighty funds that the people need to know. So the total cost would be five thousand five ninety nine seventy two. Making a motion to approve the grant application to the Grand Traver Band, uh, plug in to a version of one of these. Thermal camera, imaging camera for the Grand Traver, five percent match, two hundred ninety three dollars, seven two cents. To be offset by a department donation.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Wilson.
Yep.
Pencil.
Yeah.
Smelter Richard, yeah, charters.
Yes.
Hold up.
Yes. Okay, Lake Michigan Beach Restaurant deals.
Who does that, so we see, our our bid opening was on Monday, whoever ten. Twenty twenty five is at two P M, we received four bids. Uh, the apparent low bid, some branch of construction, the amount of two hundred and sixty eight thousand, we need our twelve dollars. So what that includes, it includes the the building, which was a lumped item, but also includes various plate work. Um, connecting to utilities, uh, some concrete, things like that, um. The second bidder was Backer Building Solutions, with a bid of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The third bidder was uh, Ripter Construction Incorporated, also known as R F I. Their bidding at two hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and thirty. Or bid was uh, from Roberts Co. Incorporated, uh, which they were the the low bid contractor, uh, for the last one. Um, that was four hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty out. So. When we, when we backed this together, we also had some, some add options included in it. Uh, and each contractor provided pricing on that. Uh, the add option was going from a. Uh, from a, an email flooring, covering to uh, the oxygen, malaria, tech covering, um. So for Grand Travers Construction, the add option for that, the flooring was one thousand fifty. We also um, talked about, we have porcelain. Pictures, porcelain sink, urinal toilet, uh, and we had those in all of our bathrooms. But we, we wanted to get a price on what stainless steel would come in as, uh, we provided that. Uh, stainless steel for the low bid contractor, Grand Travers Construction, it's fourteen thousand nine hundred. Um, I'm mixed on that, just because, you know, the downside, they go sequestering, yeah. Prison line, yeah, um, they they take abuse, but with our hard water, they spot up, um. We've not had many issues.
With porcelain.
With porcelain, and we haven't had a worse bomb along with toilet in about twenty five years.
True that, I mean. Again, I think stainless is great in more in institutional areas, but. The biggest problem I have with stainless is, in a, in a more public use area. Is vandalism, someone takes a screwdriver or a knife or a nail and scratches it. You don't repair it, and the price of repair, a broken porcelain toilet or a vandalized one. Is, you know, like fifteen hundred bucks, I'll send down with leave, it's nothing.
So, we did request normal flushing valves, just. It's been our experience with the automatic stuff, they're great now, but they are creating problems. Uh, we're keeping it old school. Um, you know, these are set up, deep family units, they'll have a little batch in there.
And they're well loaded.
Well loaded, they're at least well loaded. So it would allow, you know, a parent of a small children to go in there, um, there's a bench, um. That's how it's designed, it's been includes foot wash station at SAC in Miami as well, um. The D N R requires us to go a little bit, unless we have a compelling reason not to, and then we activate that a three by that.
In Grand Travers Construction, don't see you.
Yeah, we have a history with them, they built City Hall, I have a fire station there, twenty hours from that happened, but. Um, we do have a visitor that for.
I'll make a motion that we grant a bid to. Grand Travers Construction for two hundred and sixty eight thousand, eight hundred and twelve, adding the flooring. Of one thousand fifty dollars. Uh, does that cover?
Yes, that's, yeah, I would say.
And then offer is the city superintendent, that's who was assigned the contract that they had, was putting an issue. The notice of awards.
And they wanna start soon. Good.
So the total, then would be two hundred and sixty nine, nineteen, sixty two?
And. Because the city was, um. Financially. So proactive, we're covered. We don't have to worry about scraping out some money, we have money in reserves along with the rate.
How much was that fair?
So with those reserves that we have. Were suggesting, and we'll probably will have to make a motion to that, anything left over in our reserves for the. Michigan Beach bathroom, put it toward. So we'll address that once, once we're all done.
Uh, I'm probably gonna also uh, take some, some dollars that were attributed to you owners on Miami. And convert it to this, to ensure that we're in our seventy five, twenty five ratio.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's work that is done for this.
Already, yeah.
We'll just do that in pause.
Yeah.
No real costs.
So, I'm excited about that, so, any other questions or comments, um?
Just to, quickly react to this question, I had a chat earlier, uh, on the Warren, um. We need to talk to the contractor about putting that, a cold at the wall flooring reception and burning that floor, and it's the wall ages. So that aesthetically, over years, it still looks nice and it's easy to clean.
Alright. Is that, was that part of the bid?
Um, we'll, we'll clarify that, but they, they should be able to.
Make the, okay, okay. Alrighty, any other questions or comments, roll call?
Pencil.
Yes.
Smelter Richard, yes. Charters.
Yes.
Hold up.
Yes, Wilson. Okay, next, uh, Marina Authority Recommendation Council. And that has to do with the seasonal race at this time.
Well, yeah.
And and plus a few other.
The Marina Authority met on October twenty nine. Pretty extensive agenda, uh, we talked about, uh. Engineering study that group, that's ongoing right now, we should have that data available to us uh next month. Next, I can grab a survey done, uh, of all of the slips and and down to the launch ramp, and we actually included. We expanded outside the grant to to include some of the whole yard area, just, just we're know what we're dealing with out in that area. Um, we were awarded a pump out, that's exciting, um, to move forward with that. But uh, essentially. The Marina Authority met to talk about the green facility, and as long as the launch ramp, you know, the launch ramp's technically. Covered under the general fund, and Reno's an enterprise account, um. But we talked about seasonal slip rates and transit rates, the launch track rates, um. Whether or not we provide a full discount, and how we give credit card fees, and how we deal with pump out fees. So, all of those items are are wrapped up into individual agendas within the agenda. Um, you know, with along with the motions now. Uh, the seasonal slip rates, the transit rates, uh, uh, the charters, provided a. A report on that during this, uh, council member report. You know, essentially, we're keeping the tiers same, uh, the highest division. Uh, every four to five years, we'll do an increase per tier. And uh, we haven't seen an increase in in our tier, probably about four or five years, so. Um, as as Mr. Charter stated, it's more of an inflationary increase, so we're staying within tier two. So the seasonal slips, which is what tier we were in last year, and then for transit rate, we're in tier high. Uh. And then the launch track rates, it was decided to stay the same, our daily fee right now is fifteen. Our seasonal fee is thirty five for residents and seventy for non-residents. Uh historically, we have done a fuel discount of ten cents per gallon. For any vessel that's more than any other Marina vessel day. Um it was decided by the group to eliminate that. Fuel is what fuel is. And uh so credit card fees in this day and age. Uh you can imagine that that most people buy fuel with credit card or they'll pay for their slip fee with a credit card. Um you can get left with a finance charge uh associated with that. Uh we had some conversations to to eliminate that, but I think it might have been more of a. A a misunderstanding how we address it. And it was it was recommended by the Re Authority to eliminate credit card fees. I think the the goal was to kind of incorporate that into fuel price. Then we got together with the course office, had more of a. Dance dialogue with Chris and how we deal with the credit card fees and. Um so if we if we wrap the credit card fee into the fuel price, then we're potentially going to be paying more in taxes.
Yeah, there isn't a restaurant that you go to anymore that if you pay like thirty car, you pay the fee. Uh so.
I think we just have to look at how it's handled through the P O S.
Yeah.
System, so it's it's easier down here.
I think there's a button. I actually, I mean, she created this on the Apple, but that is square on the iPad and there's a button for it. Calculators when you're doing these tests. So everything is in there, it should be fucking plug and play. Um but I think when we were talking about whether they're using a calculator, probably just.
Yeah. Costly. We will, I think we need to evaluate our P O S. And and see if there's a better way to do that, but. But the last thing that the Re Authority recommended was to um. Require a pump out fee at any one, so again, historically, we were providing uh pump outs free to seal soap holders. And any individual that purchased one of the ten dollars of fuel. Um this is the second uh grant that we got purchase of uh a pump out. And that's through the Michigan Bowling Pump Out Program. They, uh when we got the original grant, they required us to charge five five dollars for pumps.
No more than.
No more than five, yeah, and then as time went on, they got flexible with that, we raised it to ten. Um they still recommend and suggest a fee of five. Uh we could probably get uh the approval of them upon the word of the grant to charge ten dollars.
So. And maybe it's a way to make a motion, but I'll discuss it. Uh as I recall, um. We were still going to maintain free to seasonal slip holders. And the other change in there would make is a ten dollar per pump out per tank. Some of these large boats come in with two tanks. Um and. They're not, they're from, they're not necessarily running the slip from to Marina, they're just. Coming in for a pump out, um people from harbor shores, all they do is come over. Get a pop up previously, they're coming over for three pop ups. Um Jacob Sims, they come over for a pop up. And they, those are the larger boats, two tanks. And we just bought a pop up, yeah, we got a green, but it costs a lot of money to be paying that thing. Um so.
Well, and the permitting for these other reasons are dependent on a pump out.
We're the only one that has. Um.
You could make that adjusted uh.
In the motion.
In motion. Like that's that's.
Adjusted how?
Well, have a single slip.
So seasonal slip holders could get it free because of the pain for our season.
Right.
Um the rate would be ten dollars per tank. So the boat comes in with two tanks or three tanks. Is adjusted therefore.
I got it, okay. Agreed, okay, so we need to take each one of these motions.
Sorry.
Well, tip or swap, I'll take that. To share the. To adopt rate tier two for seasonal slips in the city of Frankfurt Municipal Marina. Any other? Comments or discussion, you think there's, okay, roll call on that.
Spencer, Richard?
Yes.
Charters?
Yeah.
Torna?
Yes.
Olson?
Yep.
Pencil?
Yes.
Alright, I'll do that. Make a motion to adopt rate tier one for fantasy subs in the city of Frankfurt Municipal Marina.
Just a small corrections.
Oh, tier I.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it was bigger one.
Any comments?
That's second.
Oh, who's the second? Jen?
Yep.
Okay. Roll call.
Charters?
Yo.
Torna?
Yes.
Olson?
Yo.
Pencil?
Yeah.
Spencer, Richard?
Yes.
The next one?
Um to maintain existing rates for daily and seasonal passes in the city of Frankfurt.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Torna?
Yes.
Olson?
You?
Pencil?
Yeah.
Spencer, Richard?
Yes.
Charters?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to eliminate all fuel discounts at the Frankfurt Municipal Marina.
Discussion. Roll call.
Olson?
Yeah.
Pencil?
Yes.
Spencer, Richard?
Yes.
Charters?
Yes.
Torna?
Yes. Hey. Okay, I'm. I'll jump on that one too. Um I'll make a motion to continue credit card fees for the Frankfurt Municipal Marina. Discussion. Roll call.
Pencil?
Yes.
Spencer, Richard?
Yes.
Charters?
Yes.
Torna?
Yes.
Olson?
Yo.
Okay.
Motion to. Charge. Pump out of ten dollars per tank. Um. For all users with the exception of seasonal stuff.
Second. I'll second, are there?
Oh, I'm sorry. Pretty, okay, roll call.
Spencer, Richard?
Yes.
Charters?
Yes.
Torna?
Yes.
Olson?
Yo.
Pencil?
Yes.
Okay, the last one uh amended is um power mediation developments. Um. In the past, we've always done this and we've always forgotten to do it for. This mediation, normally we need one. Two people. To go to mediation and Josh and I have been the ones talking with the attorney. Have all of the information. For um. For that, so. We need three people to tell us who should go.
Somebody you want. So Josh, Josh.
Which is cool.
Josh has to go.
Yeah.
And you send me with the attorney. I I would make the motion that the the mayor.
And Josh.
Yeah, and Josh. Attend the. Mediation.
Take the consul mentor's delegates. In the upcoming mediation?
Yes. Exactly. That's what I mentioned, yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second. Any discussion? Uh roll call.
Charters?
Yes.
Torna?
Yes.
Olson?
You?
Pencil?
Yes.
Spencer, Richard?
We we have. Okay, finally, Republican but. Hopefully that item itself.
Yeah, thank you, Jay White, forty eight. Bridge Street also um here representing the. Uh Hudson Trust of Benzie. I just wanted to uh share with you that we were the recipients. Of a rotary cherry's grant uh for the cottages according, and this grant is. Specifically awarded to us to make enhancements to the. Project we would other buyers not been able to afford. So our real estate construction committee met since our full board, not till this past week. Wanted to share a few of those minor uh things that we do plan on. Uh to improve not only our site, but also neighborhood conditions. Uh the biggest one is for new sidewalks uh on the one hundred feet. Uh that we uh have uh at the morning, so it's really it's a replacement of the current. Sidewalk, uh a few sections were broken while factory trucks delivered their loads. So we're replacing the the entire one hundred feet with new sidewalk and spread. We'd also like to um uh add a sidewalk on the along the west side of Ninth Street uh for the eighty feet. Uh that quarters, so that's a quarter of Ninth Street. So we adding a sidewalk to the end, which encourages the city to consider its future by its sidewalk. Expansion to add the sidewalk along the west side of Ninth Street from. Uh Trinity Church all the way up to uh Elm Street and around the corner, um. So it currently comes from James, I think on the. East side, east side to go to the church, to the church and then those using the sidewalk with cross of the church. You know, side block and block north to um Elm Street. And making sure that that circles around the top of um. Um an intersection, because that's a pretty intersection, it's a strange intersection, so we want people, keep a lot of the road there. So that one is just a, you know, our our whole of the city is near that. Uh sidewalk expansion picture, we're gonna give it on our C M, your our bus. Uh some of the other things that we'll be doing is uh factory driveways. For all of the the homes, um we have a commentary where we'll be installing a uh gazebo. Gazebo was donated and some of the uh infrastructure uh for that. Um will be added because of this grant. And then another baby for us, you have um landscaping enhancements, so. The road place home, we were able to um. You know, seed the lawn, we get some grass to grow, but we didn't do much else in terms of landscaping in all the homes. Uh the tree board was tight enough to plant some trees uh along the road place, so we're not for that. Uh what we'd like to do at the cottages is um I use some of that grant funding for trees.
I think a tree board is already thinking.
Yeah. And we'd like to have those trees, obviously, um warning and. Ninth in the in the rural right away, which is traditional, sorry? Uh thanks for this.
Sorry.
So we'll be adding more. Thank you.
Any other Republicans? No?
Mostly loser, always want to be killed.
Maybe not sprays?
No.
Alright. Thank you. Roll call.
Charters? Yes. Olson?
Yeah.
Pencil?
Yeah.
Spencer, Richard?
Yes. Thank you.
Be a little layer. Mother. And Jay. You have to walk. Not it's the biggest wrong to. Definitely has. These are store. Can call.
If you folks can dance to others.
I don't know if I'm gonna have a right.
Okay.
Somebody can pick.
No, Myra's coming.
Myra is, okay, um.
Hey. Because technically, let me end this. Um.